You are watching Access La Porte County Channel 97. Coming up next is the October 13th meeting for the Long Beach Town Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access laporte county dot org.
Welcome everyone to the October Long Beach Town Council meeting. Let's please stand for the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on one nation deep under God, in his book of liberty and justice for all.
Meg, could you please take roll call?
Sure. President Schmidt.
Here.
Anita Remigius.
Present.
Kendra Bartlett.
Here.
Cindy Levy.
Here.
Colleen Lane.
Here.
Chief Swistec.
Present.
Attorney Willoughby. Clerk Collins, I am present. That concludes roll.
Thank you. Would anyone like to make a motion for the approval of the council minutes from September 8th, 2025?
I would be happy to make the motion to approve the council minutes from the September 5th meeting.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the special meeting October 3rd, 2025?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the special meeting on October 3rd, 2025.
Do we have a second? Oh, okay.
Second, Anita Remigius.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have a new section of the agenda called the consent agenda. I think it might speed up our meetings a little bit. And Meg is going to explain how that works.
Yes, so these are all standard business approvals that do not require a lot of extra conversation. So we can go through and approve every, every one of these at the same time with one motion, which hopefully will save some meeting time for items that need more time in conversation. Still being transparent on the agenda online and then printed agendas here. These will all be spelled out, the totals by the month like we've always had. They will also be spelled out in each set of the minutes. And you'll notice on the bottom that we have added a combined bank rec and a quarterly memo. And both of those are items that resulted from the audit. And the combined bank rec is simply it being made aware to council that all of the bank recs have been in fact completed for the month. And then the quarterly memo just explains one of our action plans that we should only have to do that for two more quarters. But again, it's just, it's explaining some items to council from the audit that are being completed timely and probably were, but this is because it was a repeat comment, we have to do this now. So that is the consent agenda from building revenue report down through that quarterly memo. And then we would just ask for a motion to approve.
I would move to approve the consent agenda.
I'm second that.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And can I just add up for the record that council will still sign all of these reports that are in the packet? That's always been the case and still the case. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. We're going to have public comments, which will be limited to three minutes. Have anyone in the audience that'd like to make public comments? Please come up to the microphone.
Name and address and can you make sure the green button is on?
Mary O'Neil, 1532.
Is the green button on? The green light?
It's on.
Okay.
Mary O'Neil, 1532 Lake Shore Drive. I've lived here for over 25 years, talking about the repaving project, and do not recall any car accidents nor pedestrians being hit by cars on Lake Shore Drive. People are in more danger with the current road surface condition and I'm all for the repaving efforts. One might actually be able to enjoy the scenery and not worry about being tripped up by a crumbling road. There are about five weekends a year when traffic on Lake Shore Drive is crazy and somehow the town has dealt with it without incident, as far as I know. Widening the road won't alleviate the situation. It may even aggravate the situation as cars may speed up coming either north or south on Lake Shore Drive since will be wider than Michigan City's Lake Shore Drive and Dunland's Lake Shore Drive. I reviewed the Haas report and did not see any traffic study in there. The walkabout that was taken on September the 8th included no owners from Lake Shore Drive who are probably the largest stakeholders in this process. On further research, there was a John Hopkins School of Public Health study from 2023 that determined that narrow lanes save lives. The study showed that from 10 to 12 foot lanes had an increased number of crashes compared to nine foot lanes. Narrow lanes also address environmental issues using less asphalt. For road use without heavy freight traffic, roads should be no wider than 11 feet. And there was another study from the Institute of Transportation Engineers that concluded that, that accidents actually increase 1.5 times when the road width is increased from nine to 12 feet. Was there any cost analysis for 11 feet? This is very reminiscent of the Lake Shore Drive sewer debacle that was also spearheaded, to quote Haas, by a certain trusted town advisor and look how that ended up. Did anybody on the Public Works Committee even research burying the utilities? I went through the March meeting of the Public Works Committee and the project was barely mentioned. Online, there were no other documented meetings on the website until late September when the report was revealed. I watched the Town Council workshop a few weeks ago for the budget when Mr. Wall declared that the Town Council had to make a decision by year end. I would ask us not to rush a project of this magnitude again. Let's get it done right. On another note financially wise, what exactly is the council lobbyists doing downstate? And could that money be better spent hiring a grant writer to pursue perhaps burying utilities on Lake Shore Drive? Thank you.
Thank you. Any more comments from the audience? Comment, Mike? Okay.
Yeah, 21 on Zoom.
Okay. Any comments on Zoom?
Yes.
Hi Abby, you want to give your name and address?
Hello, Abby Neary, 2019 Lake Shore Drive. And I would like to express that I am also against widening of Lake Shore Drive. Mary had shared several of the studies about how increasing the width will not slow traffic. There's also currently with 106 signatures against widening of Lake Shore Drive. I also read the recent report and a couple of questions that I have counsel that I'd like to be addressed tonight. But how will we raise the 20% each year? And what if the funding is cut in subsequent years and we begin the project? Notice that engineering estimates include paving, but what about the cost to take down trees, the utility poles needed to be moved, impact to recent spend for stormwater management? I actually went and several of the projects, including two done at stop 22 and at 23 would now. Good way to be redone. And how will there additional funds that need to be raised? And I'd also like to ask if we explored alternatives, which is signs at each stop, crosswalks, or people down and see the clear demarcation of stop one made to comment.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom would like to make a comment?
I would like to make a comment.
Okay, give us your name and address, please.
My name is David Miniot and my address is 2949 Lake Shore Drive. I'm against the project and I would underscore and echo what Mary had mentioned. In addition to what Mary had mentioned, what I find to be, my question would be, if we're going to widen in Lake Shore Drive and pave it or would, would, if we, if we go, if we end up doing the sewer project, wouldn't that be fiscally irresponsible to have to then go ahead and then redo that project on Lake Shore Drive?
It's just a comment section, not a question and answer.
Okay, well then my, my, my concern is the, the fiscal responsibility of this group and that we, as far as I'm concerned, the issue of the sewer project is, has not been resolved. And if, if the, if the issue is, is going to be that we're going to have to build sewers, why, why put it, why widen the street until we know what that, the resolve of that is first? So I think it'd be, it's, it's, would be the responsibility of this board to be held accountable to first understand what that's, what that issue was with, or with, with regards to the sewer project and, and what will end up being the resolve of that, that issue. It seems like that's still an outstanding issue. And I think this is premature. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Any more comments on Zoom?
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment, please.
Okay, please tell us your name and address.
My name's Jack Carey at 3008 Lake Shore Drive. And for the background, our family's been in Long Beach for over 90 years. I've been coming up there for 65 years. And I do a lot of biking. I do a lot of walking on the, on the roadway. I have no issues with how it is right now because of the fact, as other people have said, the wider the streets are, the faster people are going to go. And to my knowledge, like the other Mary had said, I don't, I don't, I've never seen any reports of, you know, car crashes or bike, bikers being run over or anything like that. Now, they might have been, but I don't, I've never seen any reports of that. So my feeling is that widening the road is only going to cause more issues down the road. So I oppose to the, to this event. So thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Any more comments on Zoom?
Yeah, hi. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, this, good evening. Tom Stevenson, 2515 Lake Shore Drive. We are strongly against the widening of Lake Shore Drive. My family has lived year round, full time on Lake Shore Drive for over 35 years, using the road daily, driving, walking, jogging and biking. We do not see a problem with the current width of Lake Shore Drive. As many recent traffic studies have concluded, widening of Lake Shore Drive would decrease roadway safety. I wanted to see what other beach communities have done with their recent Lake Shore Drive paving project and I measured several new pavement areas with for these communities. In 2024, Dunland Beach repaved Lake Shore Drive with the pavement being between 18 and 19 feet wide. In 2025, Michiana, Michigan repaved a section of Lake Shore Drive with the pavement being 18 feet wide. It appears that the other beach communities have set the pavement width standard for a low speed urban environment to be between nine and nine and a half feet wide per lane, which is also recommended for the National Association, by the National Association of City Transportation Officials. For these reasons, we are strongly against the widening of Lake Shore Drive in Long Beach. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Any other comments on Zoom?
Hello? Hello? I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
Tony LaSuso, 2024 Lake Shore Drive. I have, actually I just want to follow up on one thing with the, the cameras that had been approved at the previous meeting. I still have not seen any legislation or any, any laws coming forward to this committee. And since there are no laws regulating the use of those cameras in the state of Indiana, I assume that we would enact our own before we put the cameras up. So just a helpful reminder there, hopefully. And second, I am against the widening of Lake Shore Drive. Two things to me that, as I read through everything seemed curious. And, and first of all, I think Mary did a great job upfront of stating all the issues, so I won't, I won't repeat that. But I will, will notice that on the website, when we have the goals for the project, they're different than what was in the Haas report. In, on our website, we have reducing encroachments into the public right of way. And on the Haas one, it says the same, but it says if necessary. So I just want to make sure that what is on our website is not the actual goal of this because I'm not sure who put the goals forward, but I think some of the encroachments into the public right of way are where people have parking spots and, and mailboxes that they probably don't want to get rid of. So we just may, may want to make sure that we're consistent with what was done by Haas and what was done there. But thank you. I'm against widening the roadway. I, I think, I think it'll only create more of a speed issue and I think it's a nice quaint roadway. And if we really wanted to widen the roadways all through town, we, we just did a whole bunch of other streets in town. And I don't think there was any goal of in reducing encroachments into the public right of way or making uniform roadways there. So it seems a little inconsistent. Thank you.
Thank you, Tony. Any other comments on Zoom? Going once, going twice, seeing none. Any more comments in the audience?
CJ Dempsey, 1534 Lake Shore Drive. I just want to piggyback on what Dave had to say. I don't know where we're at on the sewers, but the sewers are the number one issue for me in the town. And I think it would be very irresponsible to spend the kind of money that we're talking about spending to widen, even to firm up the underlayment without having that resolved. So I would, I guess I'm, I would ask the council to update the town on where we're at with the sewers and what the current thought is about sewers on Lake Shore Drive so that we can have an informed decision or discussion about whether or not paving right now makes sense.
Thank you. Any more comments from the audience? Okay, seeing none, we'll end public comments and move on to committee reports. Police Department, Police Commission, Chief Swistec.
Good evening. For the month of September, the Police Department responded to 277 calls for service when compared to 408 in the previous year for a decrease of 131 calls for service. During the month of September, 21 incident reports were documented. A total of eight individuals were arrested, one felony arrest for motor vehicle theft. Two individuals were arrested for felony resisting law enforcement. One misdemeanor arrest for resisting law enforcement. Two arrests for operating a motor vehicle while intoxicated. One misdemeanor arrest for driving with a suspended driver's license. One misdemeanor arrest for operating a motor vehicle without ever receiving a driver's license. The calls for service decrease of approximately 131 calls for service are directly attributed to the primary investigation that our deputies spent countless hours in the evening investigating the vehicle break-ins, not only here in the town of Long Beach, but also in the Dunland Beach Association. I want to thank the residents of Long Beach for sharing their Ring video and their surveillance camera video. We were able to take the video footage that was provided to us and we compared it to previous body camera footage that police officers had captured on unrelated incidents over the last several years. And we did a comparison of what we thought may be our suspect who looked familiar to some of our deputies and to some of the officers with the Michigan City Police Department that were assisting us with this investigation. We were pretty much confident that we had the suspect identified, but weren't ready to issue or ask for the issuance of an arrest warrant. So we kept working nighttime surveillance. We had our drone up at night with the thermal seeking image on it. We had patrols in the neighborhoods looking for this individual. And we found that, to us, we assumed he was living nearby. In fact, he was. He was living in the courts apartments just off of Carwick Road. Corporal Matthew Farthing did an excellent job. He encountered the individual on an unrelated call. The individual jumped off of a balcony at the courts apartments and swam out into the mucky waters behind Els Carwick. He was then taken into custody. After being taken into custody, we asked for the issuance of a search warrant for his apartment at the courts. We were able to recover some previously stolen items. Through the course of the investigation, we learned that this individual was responsible for getting into approximately 50 to 60 unlocked vehicles. He was taking sunglasses, currency, couple handguns, laptops, small electronics. Long Beach is a very trusting community and all too often we leave our vehicles unlocked in the community. The individual in fact admitted that we were a soft target and he walked into the community on several nights, made his way through the community and was able to obtain many items from vehicles that were unlocked. He's currently sitting in the Laporte County Jail, facing several felony charges. Again, I would like to commend all of our staff for the countless hours they had put into this investigation, to include our reserve deputies who came in and volunteered countless hours in the evening, just simply sitting surveillance, doing extra patrols. And they put a successful end to this investigation. Aside from that, on September 25th, we were involved in a deer accident where we struck a deer on Chassleton Drive at 6:00 AM that ran out in front of our vehicle and caused approximately $2,400 of damage. It may be a little bit more once we get the vehicle into the body shop because they believe the headlight may also need to be replaced. But that was on the early morning hours of the 25th. We did not have a police commission meeting for the month. And unless there's any questions, that's all I have on the police department report.
Thank you. Town Administrator Chief.
Currently, we're working on the 2026 insurance renewals with High Street, which is formerly General Insurance of Michigan City. Couple of weeks ago, Clerk Collins, myself, Street Superintendent Dolph and the Water Superintendent Greg Parrish had sat in with our risk assessment with our insurance company. We're very pleased to report that we have received their findings from their assessment of all the town's facilities to include some policy review. And there were only two things that they had wrote up on the overall summary. One was that we add water sensors to buildings near our water heaters and our water intake into the buildings. The sensors are provided by the insurance company at no cost to us. We have since ordered the sensors and have placed them in the buildings that they had requested us to do so. And then the second suggestion was that we utilize their HR services and they had provided information on that. Aside from that, there are no major concerns, no issued warnings. And two things that were, were not on the report, were mentioned at the Public Works Building, one of which was to install a barrier, concrete barrier in front of our fuel pumps of which we are currently working on and should have completed in the next couple of months. Leaf collection begins on November 3rd. Just a reminder, the month of November, you can put out your leaves to the curb side. Please do not place them in the street. No pumpkins, no sticks, no large objects. Those do cause damage to our leaf vac machines. Stop 22, last week, we completed the shoulder improvements on the southeast corner of Stop 22. We had widened that shoulder somewhat. We were constantly finding that we were replacing the shoulder with gravel. So we went ahead and had the mason put in a gutter and a curb there. We met with the homeowners there. They also were very appreciative, appreciative of that effort. And this week we'll be working to do some lawn restoration there, bring in some black dirt and some seed to complete that project. Working with the tree board to complete the tree list for November and December, we'll be seeking quotes, reference any of the trees that need trimming and/or trees that are on the town's right of way that need to be removed. Trunk or treat with the Police and Fire Department will be Friday, October 30, October 31st, 5 to 7 PM at the Public Safety Building. We encourage anyone that's interested to please reach out to us to reserve a spot in the parking lot for your vehicle or table where you can come and hand out candy to the children. We will also have many other fun events going on that night at the Public Safety Building. In addition to that, community wide trick or treat will be on Friday, October 31st from 5 to 7 PM as well. Lastly, the new website training. Last week, Kayla, Meg and I had sat in on the first training session. We have another training session next week. We were mandated to get the new website update through the web provider Civic Plus. This will be completed hopefully in the next couple of weeks with the launch in November or December. So you'll see some new features on the town's website. So we'd encourage you to visit the website. And if you have any suggestions, concerns or comments, please reach out to us. We would love to hear from you once the new website is launched. That is all.
Thank you, Chief. Volunteer Fire Department, Dave.
Good evening, everyone. This is the report for activity through September 30th. The fireside, we stand at 87 calls year to date. That's in comparison to 69 last year. 59 of the calls have been in Long Beach, 26 have been in Dunland Beach, and two in Michiana. And the Dunland and Michiana is a result of providing mutual aid for Michiana Fire Department. The actual month, we had three hazardous conditions, which I know we had fallen tree limbs, power line issues, and I believe there was a carbon monoxide call also, three of those. And then eight false alarms, a total of 11 calls. That's a, we're running 26% higher than we have the year before. Average membership attendance per fire call stands at seven members. On the medical side, we are at 88 calls and that's in comparison to 84 the year before. 86 of the calls have been in Long Beach, one in Dunland and one in Michiana. The call makeup, we had a full arrest. We had six personal injuries. We had two sick persons and we had two lift assists. Average turnout for, of members per medical call stands at five. Our year to date average response time for fire and medical are identical, 4.45 minutes. And members have donated 2,384 hours to the town. Just a little bit of a recap, on October 6th, we had members out at the Burn Tower on Hitchcock where we were doing various scenarios in a heated environment. And tonight, we had probably 17 of our members. We were pulling all the hose off of our engine two and testing it and then the fun part repacking it all. And that concludes my report. Any questions?
I do have a question.
I know you do.
So, so our, our fire department and our police department are working extremely well together.
Yes.
With the new Public Safety Building, which is also serving wonderful functions. with the new Public Safety Building, which is also serving wonderful functions in several social aspects. And we're all very proud of the volunteers on our Fire Department and our reserves on our Police Department. My question to you is, I know that we have workers who are on the Volunteer Fire Department, sons-in-law, I mean, we have women. I don't know that we have any fathers and daughters, but I'm curious what drove you, if, like, when it all started in the 1930s, I believe, grandfathers? I'm trying to think. What started? What do you think started people following in the footsteps of someone to serve? And it doesn't have to be a long answer, of course, but...
It's pretty simple. Actually, a number of years ago, quite a few years ago, I was looking at the original roster of our department, and I realized my grandfather was on the original Fire Department, along with Mr. Matthias. I mean, some of the founders of Long Beach were on. So why do brothers and son-in-laws and father-in-laws and brothers and sisters? I think it's a sense of community. It's a sense of giving back. I mean, we're certainly not doing it for the money. $200 a year, and that's our allowance. And for me, it's been 41 years because I love this community, and I want it to be better, and hopefully our actions will allow that to happen.
And you didn't know your grandfather was on until you saw?
Didn't know, no. He died, he died at a fairly young age, but when I'm looking at the founding members of the Fire Department in 1931, I saw Elmer Dunlap, and I'm thinking, Doug, God, so pride factor there.
Thank you. I know it's the same for Police Department as well, right? I mean, a lot of people fell in, so, thank you.
Well, it's, we care about the community.
Thank you.
Among us, we may gripe, oh, we gotta do this and this, but when it comes down to it, when the bells go off, I may say we have five people in attendance at a fire call or are history. Most of these calls are called off soon. If we have a barn burner, we have 17 members showing up, and wives and family bringing us, you know, donuts and refreshments, so.
Of course, donuts. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Okay, thanks. Thank you.
The Fire Commission did not meet. That's a quarterly meeting. Colleen, anything on NERPC?
No, the executive session for the end of September was canceled, so we won't meet until December.
Okay. Thank you. Public Works, Kendra.
I was not there. Chief was, so he's going to get that report.
Okay. Public Works Chief.
Public Works and Safety Committee met on Monday, September 22nd at 8:00 AM. The department reports, Street Department Superintendent Tom Dolph reported on the CCMG project for 2025, which is in your packet tonight for closeout and final pay application. The overall paving project for this year came under budget by $81,000. You also have a change order before you tonight for that. Discuss the future F-550 snowplow truck for the Street Department. Estimated delivery for that truck would be sometime in 2027, probably the fourth quarter of 2027. We'll be bringing forward to the council in the following months a request to authorize the ordering of another plow truck for the town. Leaf collection, there was a recommendation to increase the monthly leaf collection. The current fee is that of $10 per month per household, with the recommended increase to go to $15 to allow for the increase in the future for the expenses for the subcontractors to include the leaf removal to a compost site, also to include capital for the purchase of new leaf vacs in the future, as all three of the current leaf vacs are constantly going, undergoing maintenance repairs. Lake Shore Drive paving project, discussion was held. Project is in initial stages. Roadway boring samples have been ordered on 12 different locations over the next six weeks. Weaver and Associates will be performing the pouring samples, and that is being supervised by Haas Engineering. Under old business, Public Works, the paving on the approach off of Chastleton has been completed. That is no longer necessary. Water Department report, Superintendent Greg Parrish gave his field report to include a 2026 capital project update. They're looking at spending approximately $100,000 in capital projects next year, some of which include installation of water valves along Oriole Trail. This would allow the Water Department, rather than having to shut down the entire length of Oriole Trail, they could segment it and break it off in, like, block-by-block segments. So if there was a major water main leak on Oriole Trail, all of the residents would not lose their water service. It could be limited to a small few number of homes. Booster station update, the repairs due to a lightning strike to our generator at the Mount Clair Water Booster Station are about complete. I think they're waiting on one more part to come in. Those repairs are going to be just a little bit over $10,000 due to the lightning strike. The new F-250 truck that the town council approved has been ordered. And then discussion on the 2026 water rate increase, which is also on tonight's agenda. And that is it for Public Works. We adjourned at 8:42 AM.
Thank you. Stormwater Board, Cindy.
Stormwater Board did not meet this month.
Park Board, Kendra.
Park Board's working on lots of things. Stop 29, they hope to get finished this fall. It's in need of definite repair to the boardwalk and the stairs there, so they're hoping to get that done this fall. Still working on the tennis courts and the whole park possible upgrade. And have the, the Park Board held three separate public meetings in addition to their regular monthly meetings. Very well attended, very well run. Paul did a great job kind of heading that up, and so now they've just condensed topics into smaller categories and then are going to work from there and hire a, an architectural-type firm to help get some costs and look a little deeper into things. So they're still working on that. Some residents at Stop 19 attended the meeting, and they may pull private funds for a blue walking mat, as the residents at Stop 16 did. They're looking into that. Park Board is working on some quotes for Stop 24 to remove invasive species and plantings there. And they purchased three new picnic tables. And I believe, that was it. Yep, that's it. Those are the highlights.
Thank you. Community Center, Anita.
Community Center met on October 7th. The bricks in the front have been reinstalled. That was after the concrete work was done in accordance with the ADA. The early stages of discussion of an endowment fund. There was a tenant donation that was made. Rentals are up. There's been improvements made to a couple of the rooms, 12 and Room 13, and people renting, are renting them. They're noticing the rooms are looking good. There, we're making, one of the Community Center management team members is taking a deep dive into the NIPSco bills to look at the energy versus the demand, see if there's anything that can be done with NIPSco to help with those bills. And one of the Community Center management team members asked whether the gym could be named after Dennis Neri, who was a teacher he mentioned for 20 years at the Long Beach School. And our next meeting is November 3rd, and discussion of rent will come later, and I think Chief. Maybe.
Thank you. Budget and Finance, Meg.
Budget and Finance meeting was held October 7th. And September financials, including the revenue expense reports, cash allocation balances, the fund projections, and the capital plan were distributed to the council and department heads. Continued agenda items and discussions included the capital assets review and updating of the capital asset threshold ordinance, the water rate study, and the 2026 budget, which are both on the agenda this evening. Next meeting is scheduled for November 4th. Any questions?
Thank you, Meg. Human Resources, Cindy.
The Human Resources group met last week, and we continued our ongoing review of the recommendations from the Labor Attorney for the Employee Handbook. And in addition, we noted all the different forms referenced in the handbook, and they're being matched up with existing forms to make sure that they, that we have all of them. And our next meeting will be November 19th at 9:30 AM.
Thank you. Tree Board, they meet quarterly?
Yeah, Ellen's not here, but they, their next meeting is in December.
Thank you. Building Commission met on 9/12 and 10/10. Permits approved, 2226 Oriole Trail with the caveat that they've set the location and Eves coverage. 1605 Indianapolis, a three-seasons room. 1603 Hidden Hills, a master bedroom addition. 2935 Ridge Road, interior rehab. 2506 Lake Shore Drive needed Stop 24 access to the beach for a septic investigation. 2028 Silver Tipped, demo and build a new home. 2701 Lake Shore Drive, a deck and a catwalk, replace and repair. 2510 Glendale, a fence and a deck with the caveat of a new site plan. 2520 Shorewood, a greenhouse, which was approved by the BZA. 3018 Northmore with the caveat of a proper site plan being submitted. 1806 Lake Shore Drive, sliding doors. That's a project of Larry's, so he recused himself, and Bob led that section of the meeting, as well as 2131 Avondale, which was a backyard project. Larry also recused himself for that, and Bob led that discussion. 3007 Northmore, remove a driveway, widen it, and pour a new one. And 2932 Bell Plain, a section of AstroTurf in the backyard. No permits were denied. It was determined that access to I-Works by the public will require a FOIA request. A portable toilet ordinance was, is to be sent to the council with a favorable recommendation. But we just had our meeting on Friday, so I'll get that to everyone for our next council meeting. Larry met with representatives from PNC, who have put together the Long Beach Stabilization Team, and they're going to spend their, this next semester coming up, on an erosion plan for Long Beach. This is called the Capstone Project, and they selected Long Beach. I think we were pretty lucky, and they have a whole team that's going to spend their whole semester trying to come up with some solutions for the town of Long Beach for erosion. That's it for the Building Commission. Any questions? Oh, I also wanted to say that 3018 Northmore, Neil, who was our new Building Commissioner, recused himself because that project was for his home. Okay. The BZA had two public hearings last week. 3013 Loma Portal Way was denied to keep their boat in the side yard, and 2520 Shorewood Drive was approved for a greenhouse in the front yard. Any questions? Thank you. APC?
You just said Neil.
Oh, Neil French, I'm sorry. I didn't write his last name down here. Thank you.
You're welcome.
But he's a welcome addition to the...
Yes, he is, to the Building Commission. Welcome, Neil.
APC, Anita.
Advisory Plan Commission met on September 15th. We continue to work on the survey questions to the Long Beach residents that will be the, end up being the update to the 2016 update to the comprehensive plan, and we will meet again on October 20th.
Thank you. Unfinished business. Ordinance number 2025-07, the 2026 budget for second reading and adoption. We don't have to do a public hearing again, right?
You do not.
Okay.
And a motion if anybody wants to approve or vote it down, so.
Trista, do you have any comments?
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to assist, answer questions. I don't have anything additional to add past what we've talked about in our workshops and the first reading at the last council meeting.
And I would just add that Budget and Finance Committee has spent a lot of time working through the budget numbers. The budget does include a 4% raise for employees. It is a funded budget, and we have full expectation that the DLGF will approve the budget. And although a public hearing is not required, we do need to take a roll call vote. And Joy, you are able to allow anyone to speak if they would like to.
Did anybody like to talk about the budget in the audience or on Zoom?
Is the council considered employees?
No, you're not.
Okay, just letting you know. You didn't get a raise.
Okay.
Accidents, no.
I would move to approve.
I would second that motion.
Any discussion?
And I would take a roll call vote. Joy Schmidt?
Aye.
Anita Remigius?
Aye.
Kendra Bartlett?
Aye.
Cindy Levy?
Aye.
Colleen Lane?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, budget is adopted.
Thank you. And then it will get, it will get uploaded, I guess, what do I need to do? I have five days, so that's the deadline to put, to...
Thank you.
Notice it through Gateway.
The Lake Shore Sewer LLC is being moved to, we have nothing to discuss tonight, that's just going to move on. Anything on town signs? It's just moving on. I don't know that we have any updates on the future Lake Shore Drive paving project.
None, other than what I discussed earlier, the core samples have been ordered with Weaver and Associates, and then the scheduling of the public workshop later this month. And the 30, 29th and 30th were the two dates that the engineering staff can be available in the evening.
Okay, we have that down under new business. Okay, new business. Resolution 2025-0011, approving the transfer of misapplied opioid settlement revenues to the proper funds.
Yes, so I can speak on this as well. This was an amount that was received that had to be sent back to the county, and this was all the way back, I think, to 2022. And the subsequent entry for the return back to the county was misposted from the wrong fund. We happened to find this after the resolution that you signed a month ago, month or two ago, sadly, because it could have been included on that, but it took a little bit longer. So this resolution just allows me to move this entry to the correct fund that it should have been returned from. And the amount is, I believe, $329.38. So I would...
I would move to approve.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution 2025-0012, resolution of the town of Long Beach, Indiana, accepting grant funding and authorizing purchase of a police vessel.
Madam President, if I may, I'd like to give a little bit of backstory on this to assist with your consideration for tonight's resolution. Last year, about this time, the town council authorized the Long Beach Police Department to spend $4,000 from our donation fund to engage Lexipol, which is a grant-writing firm, to apply... to apply for a federal FEMA grant with the Port Security Grant Program. Typically, that grant program opens annually in the month of May, closes in July and awards are shortly thereafter. Um, this year, fortunately for us, we've been preparing for the submittal for the grant since um, January of this year. They opened the grant on August 1st and they closed the grant on August 14th, just 14 days. Um, for us, it was a blessing because I think there were not too many people that were prepared to get their grants submitted and therefore the $90 million across the U.S. Um, for first responders, um, we were fortunate enough to receive notice in the past several weeks that our grant um, award was successful. Little bit of backstory on the Long Beach Police Department's um, police boat. I spoke to the former Chief Marshal, Bob Sokowski. Bob tells me that um, formerly he had applied also for a grant program where they obtained the current 19-foot Boston Whaler that the Police Department's been utilizing for the last 20 years. Um, that boat, this July 4th, when it left out of the harbor to go out on the patrol, um, blew an engine and the engine was too costly to repair. The boat was um, aging and therefore we decided not to repair the vessel. We were hoping that after the July 4th um, engine um, being disabled, that the grant would open at some point this year. When it did open on August 1st, um, I did apply and as stated, we were successful. Therefore, it's a 75-25 match. The boat is $227,281.20. With the 75% match, the federal government would provide the town with $170,460.90 and our 25% match would be $56,820.30. The Police Department and its staff have been having conversations on how to come up with the grant funds uh, for the matching funds. And we are very confident through the generous um, in-kind donations of the community that we will be able to fund the $56,000 through either previous or current um, donations into the police donation account. Therefore, not having to use any tax levy or any other reserve funds of the town, um, the matching grant would all be paid for through the police donation account. Several questions have come up in recent weeks about the annual cost, um, which is really no different than the annual cost from our current boat, but maybe slightly higher. Um, the new boat will have two engines compared to one engine. I have reached out to B&amp;E Marina, spoke to Rod Benz. It would be approximately $1,500 a year to do the preventive maintenance uh, service on the two outboards on that boat. Fuel, um, it burns about one gallon per hour. Um, we estimate we would utilize 13 to $1,500 a year in fuel, um, which would come out of the Police Department's fuel budget. Um, we would not be coming to the council asking for any additional fuel. Storage, we have um, a slip request into the Michigan City Port Authority for a 30-foot slip to keep the boat in the water throughout May through October. And the winter storage, um, the vessel would be stored in the back building, the Public Safety Building, at no cost to the town. And any training that we would receive um, for operation of the boat would come from the Department of Natural Resources or the Coast Guard, of which the training would be at no cost to the department. Both of those agencies would provide training to us. Benefits of having the new boat, um, our current boat, obviously very outdated, it was a year 2000 Boston Whaler. The new boat would have sonar. So if the boat is out on patrol and there is a lost individual underneath the water, the boat would be able to locate the individual because our current boat did not have sonar. This boat would have sonar, it has thermal imaging, has dive tank equipment and holders for um, the Michigan City Police Department's dive team and/or the Michigan City um, Fire Department's dive team that we would call to, to assist us. And the boat would have full communications, communications with the United States Coast Guard, would have a marine radio and would have communications for all of the LaPorte County um, first responders, either EMS, police and fire. Um, our current boat did not have that, we would have to operate off of a portable radio where the new boat would have a radio permanently mounted um, to the boat. Um, aside from that, the resolution is just memorializing, if approved tonight, allowing the clerk to go ahead to contact FEMA, that the town is willing to accept the grant award. And we have um, 60 days to do that and currently I think we're about 20 days in, so we have about 40 days left to notify them. If there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer any.
Is there a specific year of the boat I know, or is it just you put the boat in and then once all the funding comes through or?
The new boat?
Yeah, because it just says what it is. So it's not until all the funding is arranged and received or?
No, um, once the council, if, uh, the council approves this, um, there is a schedule with FEMA that we have to follow closely. Um, that is ordering the boat in January, receiving no later than July. Um, the manufacturer tells me it's about a 45-day turnaround currently to get the boat. Um, when the boat is delivered, um, delivery is included in this cost, they will fly out to operators that will train our operators on the boat at no cost to us. And then additionally, um, as discussed at one of our previous council meetings, um, this boat would also be used by um, the Michigan City um, Police Department as well, or the LaPorte County Sheriff's Department, um, because the Sheriff's Department has a dive unit. They also have a marine patrol unit, but they do not maintain a boat on the water here on Lake Michigan. As many of you know, the Coast Guard has gone from a 24/7 operation to only 40 hours a week. Um, we have close communications with the Coast Guard Chief. We meet um, monthly and uh, he is well aware of the grant. And honestly, I think they also were um, a big support to this town to encourage FEMA um, to provide this grant to us because they see the need on Lake Michigan since the Coast Guard um, does not have a presence like they used to have. And they also offered us storage at Coast Guard Station if by chance, um, the Marina in Michigan City was not available. The Coast Guard Chief said that we could put the boat in the water at their um, base station at the Marina in Michigan City.
Thank you.
Any more questions? I would move to approve.
I would second.
Any discussion? No, that would have to come in public comments, but what's your question? Paul, come over here.
Paul, 153013 Loma Portal Way, uh, I have a lot of experience with boats and I want to make sure that the Town Council understands that they're well-known, rules upon the boats and that the annual cost for a boat is about 10% of its purchase price. So if you're looking at a boat that has a $250,000 purchase price, the town is accepting an ongoing cost of about $25,000 to be paying that boat. And I just want to make sure everybody
Remember.
You can look it up, but that's a well-known, a fund that's been placed for many years.
Thank you.
Madam President, I'd like to add that in speaking to the DNR, um, the grant that has been offered to us, if by chance, the new boat has a blown engine, say five years down the road after the warranty has expired, this grant program through the Port Security Grant allows for cities and towns to apply for replacement engines, replacement equipment. So there are grant programs out there that will assist to maintain the vessel as part of the grant award. Um, they know when they award these grants that there is ongoing maintenance and there can be large expenditures. For instance, the current boat, B&amp;E Marina, provided us with an estimate to repair and replace, the current engine on the current boat was $38,000. We weren't going to put $38,000 into a 25-year-old boat. Um, but this grant program does have, as long as the grant exists, does have safeguards out there to allow communities to ask for assistance to maintain assets that are awarded through the grant.
Thank you. All right, we've got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed?
Opposed.
Three to two passes. Uh, Water Rate Study, schedule a council workshop.
Yes, so uh, council was given hard copies that are at the table and this is a preliminary draft for you to start looking at and that the Budget and Finance Committee has discussed this study in depthly. And we're planning to have more conversation over the next few weeks. And the plan is that this would result in an ordinance for first reading at the November meeting. So I do have Trista on. Uh, she's going to talk about the study that Senator Dalton prepared, uh, that we've worked on with our Water Department, uh, myself, again with Budget and Finance and a bit of Public Works. Uh, so, Trista?
Or, may I ask first, Mark, would you mind putting the camera back so I can uh, enjoy the audience I'm speaking to? There we go. Thank you. We have, before getting to the table today, two different drafts and I uh, have watermark them as drafts because there is further conversation that needs to occur, but the values that you find there are well-informed. The first copy on the cover page says, uh, Rate Study Preliminary Draft in the larger font there. No Michigan City Adjustment. I'd like to talk through that one first very quickly. You have two different versions in front of you because we do not know yet the rate increase that Michigan City is, um, I don't know, considering may be too strong yet. Uh, we have information that they will be increasing their rates. Of course, as you know, the town purchases water, uh, and um, from Michigan City and then of course distributes it through our water system to your residents. So, uh, we have to pay for that service. It may be January, it may be into the next summer, we're not exactly sure when that's going to happen and so, um, best informed, the Rate Study for Long Beach, of course, we're missing that piece of information. So you have two options moving forward. The first one then is, if you were to make an adjustment to your rates now for the operational expenses of the Water Department that we know to be the case, we'll review through that in just a moment briefly. As well as make an adjustment to the capital, um, reserve monies, which I'll again circle back to in a moment. Leaving then the opportunity for the rates to be adjusted if and when Michigan City does actually increase their rate, you will then have the opportunity to make an informed, fully just, fully informed decision on what the new rate should be based on Michigan City's new rate to you. All right, so what you have then on the no Michigan City Adjustment, first two pages reflect for you the true revenues and expenses of the last four, four complete years, which is important to note. So for 2021 through 2024, you'll see revenues listed across the top and then your expenses or disbursements begin halfway down that page and continue on to page two. What you see at the bottom of page two then is, for the operational expenses, the um, excess or deficit resulted. These values reflect the posting in the Water Department Fund, meaning you do see some years that the bond expenses were not included. The bonds have always been paid. They just simply were not always, prior to Meg's tenure, not always um, reflected in same line in the budget because of how the civic system was recording the payments. Uh, moving on then to what will be your uh, physical page four. Once the rate study is finished, there will be actual page numbers that line up appropriately, but it's just list the different balances that you had over those same corresponding last four years. And you see that the water fund at the top has continued to decline uh, in cash balance. Keep in mind however, the asterisk there is, we did have a large water project that did use cash from the water fund and that was intentional. Uh, it had been building and saving some balance so that uh, expense did come out of the fund as well. The next two pages then are where we get into the meat and potatoes of the actual study itself. We'll use then the end of 2024, the last complete year that we have, make some adjustments to then move forward into what would 2026 need to be or what, what should it look like for the best operational capacity of the town's uh, Water Department? In that then, in that adjustment column are some informed numbers from 2025. If expenses went up or down, for example, um, and then what some revenue predictions are. What you'll see on that page is that the local capital charge revenue, um, just below half of the revenue section will be reduced to zero. As we have discussed in Budget Finance Committee, the debt service for the water bond from 2005 and six for the SRF bond is paid off as of July of 2027. Presently, there is both a sinking fund and an escrow fund held by the Bank of New York Mellon. And as of the October payment coming up toward the end of the month, both of those funds combined will have sufficient money in them, sufficient cash balance, to pay off all remaining debt service between now and July 1st of 2027. It's always intended that the escrow fund will cover the last full year of debt service. The sinking fund though, has also earned some interest over the years and uh, with the monthly payments that are required each month has built up a little bit of cash and so you will no longer be required to collect that capital charge on the bill towards specifically the SRF loan. So for the pro forma 2026 column then, you'll see a zero listed for the local capital charge revenue. It's important at this point to also recognize that the $10,000 listed in the same column for 2026, the $10,000 listed for interest income as well as the TAP fees, $9,471 are not used as a solid revenue moving forward in the sense that those are variable. And so we want to make sure that as we predict revenues for you, that will be available for operational purposes, that we use uh, reliable recurring revenues on a monthly basis. And we'll get to that number here in just a moment. The Fire Protection Service, revenue of $30,000, that's to zero against the fire protection charge that you see in the expenses. So that is not a chart, a revenue that we reserve for operational costs. As you look to the bottom then of that 2026 column on your following page, you see the expenses finish up. At the current listing for 2026, you would see an operational deficit of $120,000. Moving to your next page then, we use those numbers from your prior two pages to inform what the rate needs are moving forward. So that top row, the $835,853 are the expenses that we just looked at in the last two pages for 2026. We removed, oh, uh, that $30,000 fire protection charge I mentioned because that nets against its own revenue. So that would mean that we would need $805,000 in revenue to run the operational um, portion of the Water Department. The current user fees, then you see the $666,660 is less than the $715, I think it was? Yes, of the last two pages. Again, that's because we removed that interest in the TAP charge. Which means that you would need 100, approximately $140,000 additional revenue and that puts it at basically a 21% increase. Strictly for the operational Strictly for the operational costs. Below that then, you see listed zero for the current local capital charge for that's on the bill. However, we do strongly recommend, and we've discussed along the last several months of Budget Finance Committee. That a capital reserve fund is still important. If you can continue a fee for that. Start to build some cash balance in your, and continue. There is some cash already in your capital improvement fund. However, looking forward to in the future, a potential replacement of the water tank. Definitely maintenance of the water tank. Some additional future infrastructure needs with Oriole Trail and some other areas. To build some cash reserve ahead of time would save the town in having to bond for that in the future and having to then pay interest on that money that you would borrow in the future. Instead, you would be able to collect and earn interest on cash that you are saving. We plan then to save 150,000 a year toward these future capital items divided by 12 months. Divided by approximately 1,250 parcels. That would bring a monthly charge on a bill to $10 per per bill. Last page then is where our final right now, I guess predictive rate change is listed. I'd like to talk through that for just a moment. You have three different columns of values. In the middle one, you see is titled present monthly rates. So right now your base charge is $29.73. Your metered rate per 1,000 gallons is $3.50.
Trista, we don't have that page. I must have sent the PDF, so just explain the numbers slowly. If you guys just, this is probably the more important page. So just go through the numbers again and everybody can listen.
Sure. Am I able to share a screen from here or no?
You should be able to with Mark.
I don't know if the Zoom is set up that way.
No, it is.
I think if you click it on your screen, Trista. That it would, will work. We tested it out.
You should be able.
Let me reorganize myself just a moment. And let me just enlarge what I've got here before I pop it to you.
Should have checked when I printed them, but I was running out the door. So I apologize.
Okay. Are you able to see now? In a relatively readable font size?
Yep.
That's fantastic. So what I was just mentioning is this column here in the middle. Your current base charge is $29.73. Metered rate per 1,000 gallons, $3.50. Let me do this instead. Bear with me one moment. Try to remove the page in the background there. And your current local capital connection charge is $22.48. You'll see the differences here along the edge on the right side. And if instead we replace the current capital charge assigned toward the loan payoff. To instead build that reserve, we would add a $10 charge. The 21% increase I mentioned just for operational expenses would be distributed across both the base and the metered rate. But ultimately then we've got all of our charges here, base at the top. Ultimately, that would result in a $5.51 savings on each monthly bill. At a 1,000 gallon usage rate, the metered rate. So while the usage charges would be increasing because of the reduction in the capital amount, it results in a net savings to each parcel on the bill. So this is as we look through the packet. Again, this would be set up right now with no increase in rate. And sorry, I'm trying to get back. I don't know. By that little guy's there. Can't get back to my other my other tab. This is with no increase in Michigan City. If you look then at the second packet that you have. Everything is set up exactly the same way that we just went through. Difference, as you see on the cover, is an adjustment of 20%. We don't know yet what Michigan Cities, as I mentioned, what Michigan Cities rate increase is going to be. However, just to give I guess an estimate. What I've given you then in that second packet is on your page four, I believe it is, a 20% increase. If Michigan City were to increase their rate to us, to the town by 20%. And jumping ahead then past all the other explanations, everything else flows exactly the same way that we just discussed. Of course, you would expect that the increase in the rate then, you would have to pass on to your residents would be a little bit larger at 28%. If we, what in the world? Excuse me, don't know why my screen just slid all the way over. If we still kept the same 150,000 collection for reserve, the same $10 per month charged toward that capital. In that scenario, if in fact Michigan City add again an arbitrary 20% increase. The monthly bills would still go down at $3.17. Your rates would be a little bit higher. This difference is a little higher. And there's a larger savings difference with the capital. And there's still a savings of $3. So for today, I wanted to give you this information, allow obviously some further conversation between now and the next council meeting. We can have further conversation on which route you would want to go, which is increase now for operations and wait for Michigan City or potentially do an overall increase with the anticipated value, which is hard to predict. But at least you have some, some values behind things to think about and start discussing amongst yourselves.
So with that all being said. And I will, we will send the electronic. I, I had to work with, work on our count. That was part of the study. Is it worthwhile then to do a workshop with council? We can have the water department present, Trista present, myself. So that council fully understands the timeframe options. We can settle on a final number for what we want saved for capital. Or not saved, but contributed towards capital. And then again, with that goal of November 1st, first reading, December meeting, the second reading with implementation in January. And again, with the understanding that Michigan City per our water and super, water superintendent is going to be increasing the rate to that they charge us. But that is still unknown, the timeline for that. So I guess, Trista, do you have any dates that work for you? The next, so the council meeting is November 10th. I know we're meeting, so the, the other workshop will be the end of October, the last week of October.
The 29th through the 30th.
So we could do this next week. We could do it. Is anybody out of town at all? Otherwise I can just send some dates and we can do it that, as opposed to doing it right now.
I'm fairly available.
I'm, I'm fairly available.
And if we can do daytime hours, which I know can be harder with work. Then the water department can be present just to understand as well and answer any questions. If that's not possible, then we'll switch gears.
But I'm out of town the first week in November.
Okay.
So I don't know if it's easier to send dates later, but that's my only real conflict.
First week in November. Okay.
What about October, the week of the 20th or the beginning of the week of the 27th? The Public Works, will you be here for that Kendra on the 27th?
We don't meet till December.
Oh, it's quarterly. That's right.
But I could meet on the 27th or we could.
Would that work for anybody? I mean, it's
morning best?
Yeah.
Is, is 8:30 or nine okay?
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm. Trista, does that happen to work?
It's fine.
Okay, so we'll try for October 27th. Anybody have a preference on the time?
How about nine?
Nine, okay. 9:00 AM on October 27th. Okay, thank you. And then we'll send this out electronically. And once it's finalized, I was thinking I can post it to the website and we can discuss how we're going to let residents know if they don't listen to town council meetings. So. Anything else, Trista, that you can think of at the moment?
Not for tonight. I just wanted to walk through. There are some additional pages that are included in the rate study. There will be some further discussion that we'll all need to have about forward looking years to address potential inflation, those kinds of things. But I wanted this information to get out to you first and then at the workshop, we'll have the rest of it available and talk through the rest of the pages of, of what the overall study looks like. Which will then inform your decision.
And, and just one last comment that it has been, it's a, another item where it's been many years since we've had any increase to water rates. So after looking at it, it's, it's needed. So. And that's all, I think.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you everyone. Permission to solicit sealed bids for used vehicles. A 2000 Boston Whaler, 19 foot center console bolt with trailer, police department. And a 2014 Ford F250 Super Duty four by four blue truck with plow package at the street department. Chief?
We're seeking permission to solicit sealed bids for those two pieces of town equipment. The 2014 Ford Super Duty truck is a four by four truck that comes with a snowplow package. Vehicle has 72,158 miles. Minimum bid we're asking is that of $5,000. And on the 2000 Boston Whaler with an inoperable engine, we are asking minimum bid to be that of $2,500. Both pieces of equipment will be available for viewing out back of the town hall. Monday through Friday, 8:00 AM to 4:00 PM. All sealed bids would then be opened at the next town council meeting at 7:00 PM in November.
The only comment I had was you talk about sealed bids will be accepted begin, must be received no later than 4:00 PM on Monday, November 10th. And then you talk about they'll be read aloud during the Long Beach Town Council meeting scheduled for 7:00 PM, but you don't give the date.
Yes, we will correct.
November 10th. So.
Correct that. Thank you.
Does this need a motion? Okay. I would move to allow the accepting of sealed bids for the sale of the surplus equipment.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Leaf connect collection, resident monthly fee increase.
This was discussed at the most recent Public Works and Safety Committee meeting. The recommendation after meeting with Street Superintendent Thomas Dolph. And looking at future capital expenditures, rising fuel costs. Rising costs in the future for both the vendors that assist with the leaf collection and then the disposal. The hauling of the materials to the composting sites. We're looking at a recommendation to increase the monthly leaf collection fee per household from that of $10 to that of $15 per month, an increase of $5 a month, beginning in January of 2026.
I would make that motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Community Center 2026 rental increase proposal recommending that to the tenants' monthly rent.
Last week, the Community Center Committee members met and there was discussion for the renewal of the tenant lease contracts beginning in January of 2026. After discussions relative to that of the most recent electrical increase by NIPSCO of 14%. In the month of, I believe, what was it? July and August Meg, we seen over a thousand dollar increase.
Correct.
Utilities. To include the numerous capital projects that have been ongoing at the community center where we are making improvements. We're looking at increasing the current rental on each of the tenants' space to be increased by 5% starting in the month of January. The only one that would not apply to would be our newest tenant, which just began their lease on October 1st. And their lease is good for 14 months, takes them through December 31st of 2026.
And I think we talked too about all of our tenants are pretty solid. One, you know, kind of every now and then talks about leaving Brenda, but, but otherwise, you know, everyone seems pretty happy and while we have been doing increases. They, it, it, the rooms are upgraded and are they're very happy. The tenants are happy with the rent that they're paying there and the community center has come a long way and I think that we discussed that the tenants will stay there and they're happy there.
There a motion?
I would make a motion that council accept the 5% rent that we will propose to the tenants at the community center.
I'll second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hosen Associates invoice number 2024374-03, $8,669.35 for payment approval.
I would make a motion to approve Hosen Associate payment for $8,669.35.
I'll second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Lakeshore Drive conceptual design project services agreement amendment number one, not to exceed $30,000. This is from Hosen Associates as well. The conceptual design of Lakeshore Drive repaving. Do we motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We need to schedule a Lakeshore Drive paving workshop for resident input. I believe the most people that can attend is on October 30th. I would imagine we would have it in the evening and maybe at the public safety building.
Or the community center.
Well, the only difficulty with that is we don't have the Zoom capability that we have in this room. I mean.
Maybe most people will attend on Zoom.
Yeah, I mean, I would encourage that, but otherwise we can get, you know, an additional 20 seats in here that we have in storage if needed. So yeah. I'd recommend that we host it here at the town hall. I'd recommend that we host it here at the town hall just because of the electronics.
What time? Six, six thirty? Any ideas, anybody?
Um, I'm open that evening.
Six would probably be better.
Six.
Six thirty.
Does that work for Kendra, Cindy?
Yep.
No.
Pauline? Oh, Pauline, you can't.
No, I can't make it.
Okay. Chris, you have to be there. Okay, six o'clock on
October thirtieth.
October. Oh, wait, is that trunk or treat?
No.
That's thirty first.
Thirty first. Okay, sorry. So six PM here on Thursday, October thirtieth.
And we will send out a mass email notification and also something to the town's website. Sharing that information with the community.
Okay. Uh House and Associates twenty twenty four CCMG invoice number sixteen hundred and thirty five dollars and forty five cents for payment approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? House and Associates twenty twenty four dash two CCMG change order number two. Reeve Riley wants to give us money back. Eighty one thousand two hundred and thirty eight dollars and sixty six cents. I would move to approve to accept that.
I'll second then. Go ahead.
Any discussion?
No.
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? House and Associates twenty twenty four dash two CCMG final pay recommendation number five, one hundred and sixty one thousand dollars, four hundred and ninety eight and eighty five cents to Reeve Riley for payment approval.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Uh Pacer recertification proposal from House Engineering for the CCMG program, ten thousand five hundred dollars.
The the proposal in front of you is a annual requirement for us to be eligible to participate in the state funded CCMG grants. Um therefore, our Pacer rating has to be um updated annually to include the other necessary information that NDOT requires the town to um provide. And House Engineering has um submitted that document in the past for us, just as an FYI.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That concludes new business. Are there any council comments?
I just want to take a quick moment to thank Deanna for making me laugh on Friday evening saying hello, everyone. It's Friday and I have a great packet for reading, so thank you, Deanna.
Any other council comments? I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Eight thirty three PM. Good work.